Good evening to all of you who are present this evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled second meeting in the month of April. It's good to see you all here tonight and as you can tell, if you haven't been to one of our meetings recently, obviously we're asking you to social distance and we're almost requiring you to do that with the way we have the seats marked off there tonight. And also, we would ask you to wear a mask. We think that's appropriate. And as you come to the speaker's stand, those of you who are presenting, you can feel free to either lower your mask or take it off while you're speaking to the council tonight. This is our second in-person meeting. We've had lots of virtual meetings during the COVID pandemic and we hope to be able to continue to have these in-person meetings. However, we will have some presenters from time to time who will be presenting remotely, so we will honor those who desire to do that. With that said, I'm going to officially call our meeting to order and I'm going to recognize Mayor Protem Cathy Behringer, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and also she will be involved with the invocation. To Ms. Behringer.
My pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Down you head with me for the prayer. Father God, we come to you this evening in need of your wisdom and understanding. Wisdom as we address the issues before this council tonight and understanding about how to best care for our town and our citizens. We thank you for the blessings you've bestowed on us as a town and as individuals. And we ask you to guide our town, our state, and our nation through the challenges of the pandemic and give us wisdom to find solutions. Amen.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Behringer, and thank all of you. We'll jump right into our agenda tonight. We have a rather busy agenda and so the first part of our agenda is entitled "Petitions and Comments." This is a portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included on this agenda. Interested parties can choose to appear live on the virtual meeting platform or provide written comments that will be shared with the council. An online forum is available. Also, I need to mention that the council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. With that said, those who may be interested in making petitions and comments, we ask you to respect everyone's time and to try to keep your comments or petitions limited to about three minutes, three to five minutes. Madam Clerk, it's my understanding that no one has signed up to speak here publicly, but there are persons who wish to speak to us virtually. Am I correct on that?
I'm not sure if they're virtually, Mr. Mayor, but we have Shawn Corrigan and Christine Sizemore.
Okay.
Mayor, I believe Ms. Sizemore is virtually, is here virtually.
Okay. Are we set to receive those comments now, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Sizemore, I think the mayor has acknowledged you. If you'd like to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Christine Sizemore and I live at 102 Shore Drive, right across from Lake Benson near White Deer Park. When my husband and I were looking to relocate in 2016, Garner was the perfect package. Mature woodlands and abundance of nature and wildlife, all with the convenience of being 10 minutes from the city. I love looking at the water from my house, but I adore the forest surrounding my home and the adjacent area with all the rich wildlife. Over the seasons, I've watched many deer, ducks, geese, herons, turtles, and all wildlife grow and live in the surrounding White Deer Park. However, Garner has been growing by leaps and bounds recently and it seems as though the developers have been removing the trees with no regard to keeping or even maintaining Garner's beautiful landscape. The wildlife has disappeared at an alarming rate and I genuinely fear that we've traded short-term economic growth for the irreplaceable wildlife and landscape. Towns around us have adopted a more rigorous tree and landscape preservation policy, which I believe we should appropriate. By keeping Garner greener, I think not only would it attract more people, but magnify the wildlife and landscape. Again, thank you for your time and have a great night.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us virtually this evening and that is an issue and a topic that we've heard about before and that's certainly something that we keep under advisement and we will note your comments on this subject, okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Now, we have no other virtual appearances, is that right, Mr. Hodges?
Correct.
Okay, but we do have a person here with us. If you would, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you may make your comments.
My name is Shawn Corrigan. I live at 106 Audrey Court in Garner, North Carolina. I want to start by thanking the Town Council for taking the time to let me talk here today. My name is Shawn. I first moved to Garner only six months ago. Now, I never imagined myself talking in front of a Town Council. I didn't even consider that it was something that I could do. I truly feel that this is important enough to do and I actually feel that the Town Council here cares enough about the city to actually do what's right, and that's huge. I moved to Garner from Raleigh because I wanted to stay close to the people I know, but also live in a place that resembles the home I grew up in. I wanted to feel like I live in a forest and Garner does excellent with that. Now, I'm sure you all may have guessed it by this point, but I'm here to talk about Garner's tree conservation requirements. With only a 10% conservation requirement, I feel as if some of the new developments in Garner are destroying the best parts about this town. Now, I could sit here all day and talk about nature, the environment, and my emotions towards new developments, but at the end of the day, what really matters is statistics and facts. I want to bring up an analysis that was done on tree coverage in the U.S. and the effect it has on property values. The authors of this analysis consist of researchers from Virginia Tech as well as a scientist in the USDA Forest Service. It's a branch here on the Research Triangle Park. Now, the analysis found that tree coverage up to a certain percentage would increase property values, but anything further than that would start to decrease the values. That percentage was 30%. That means to maximize property values, developers would need to preserve at a minimum 30% of the existing trees. They also noted that canopy protection had the strongest effect at increasing property values in the eastern United States where Garner is. Another interesting finding was that older trees had a stronger effect at increasing property values than newer trees did. That hints that planting new trees in the place of old trees might not be enough to keep the property values up. Now, another paper stated that wooded lots with two-thirds coverage had 30% price increase over unwitted lots. Development costs in those places were only 5.5% greater to keep the trees there, but builders reported that they were able to recover the extra cost of preserving trees and higher sales price for a house and that the homes on wooded lots would sell sooner. Now, I can give a clerk papers for both of these studies afterwards. If you look at other studies on the economic benefits of canopy preservation, you'll find similar results across the board. I am requesting that the town of Garner increase the tree conservation requirements of Garner up to at least 30% for new developments. With everything considered, I do believe that the benefits of increasing the requirements to 30% clearly outweigh the drawbacks and I hope you all agree. Again, thank you for giving me the time to talk today.
Okay, thank you, Shawn. And I would note that, I know this matter has gotten some attention from our UDO rewrite Committee and Mr. Dellinger serves on that along with, I believe, Ms. Behringer. And so, at this time, I don't have any other comments, but certainly we appreciate that you're taking the time to bring that to our attention and it will receive appropriate attention, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hodges, are these the only persons we are aware of at this point? I'll ask, is there anyone else in the audience who desires to speak during this time or came prepared to make comments? Okay, I believe that's all the persons that we were aware of. So, thank you all. Okay, the next item for the council to consider is the adoption of the agenda. You have it before you and you'll notice the various elements of that and we're going to get to one of those in just a few minutes, but at this point, I need a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews, and seconded by Ms. Behringer and Mr. Singleton. So, unless there are any comments or questions, I'm going to ask the council, if you approve the adoption of the agenda, please load "aye."
Aye.
If there's any opposition, "no," and there is none. So, thank you. The agenda is approved. All right, I see a number of members from our police department here and our police chief is here tonight. That means there's some special presentation and so we look forward to hearing from those folks here this evening. I'll begin, though, by recognizing our town manager, Mr. Rodney Dickerson, who has a special recognition and presentation to make. Mr. Dickerson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. One of the great honors I get as a town manager is to recognize employees that have done the town a great service and done that for a number of years. And tonight, I have the pleasure of recognizing two individuals in the police department. First, we'll do these one at a time. We're going to recognize Dana Clay, who has served as the accreditation manager for the police department. And she's right here. I'm going to stand, put you on the spot here as we talk about you for a little bit here. So, she didn't start with the town of Garner. She started her career in law enforcement service at the North Carolina Education and Training Standards Commission, which gave her a good start to knowing the standards to apply as an accreditation manager, I would say. And then she came to the Garner Police Department. She served several different roles in her 11 and a half years at the Standards Commission, which began in 91, including the state correctional coordinator, police administrator, instructor certification coordinator, and various other training roles. She started here in Garner in May 2003. And just to put that in perspective, in 2003, a gallon of gas was a dollar eighty-three. You all know how much it is now. Apple launched iTunes for us to have Apple phones. And popular films were Finding Nemo and The Matrix Reloaded. So, I got to ask you which one of those are your favorite?
Finding Nemo.
Okay, all right. And popular musicians Beyonce and Clay Aiken. You going to pass? You going to pass? Oh, you take Beyonce? Okay, that's a good choice. All right. But we want to thank her for her years of service here. Like I said, she started in 2003 here in Garner. Primary role as accreditation manager and as you know, we're a nationally accredited agency through Kalia and she prepares us for that each and every year. And she assumed various other roles and she transitioned in 2014 as a customer success advisor and onboard training specialist for Power DMS, our records management and training module. And she regularly teaches classes and workshops, so she's been a valuable asset to us as well as other departments throughout the nation. She also received the Rob Apple Officer of the Year Award in 2007 and she was recognized by her peers as the most outstanding employee in the police department that year. Very humble, I've known her since I've been here. Very humble, never seeks the limelight or credit and has always just done a great job for us. And so now, I'm going to call up Chief Joe Benz to say a few words about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Good evening, Chief. Good to see you.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here to recognize these two individuals on their long careers in public safety, long careers to the state, to the town of Garner. Forty-six years between the two of them. I was going to walk out the door for retirement. That's a lot of knowledge and service lost to the town, so we're certainly appreciative of both their efforts and both their time that they spend in the town. Dana, again, came to us in 2003 at the time I was a sergeant. I just got promoted. We worked together back in the back and Dana is probably responsible for a lot of the hiring that we did for many of the years, first several years that she was in that administrative manager position. She kind of took over accreditation. And I can just tell you from personal experience, accreditation is really, I say, a nightmare from an administrative point, from my standpoint, just to make sure that we're meeting all the standards, the number of standards that we have to meet. She was the person that we would send things through to make sure, before we passed a new policy, to make sure that we were doing it right. She was kind of that stopgap to make sure everything was going well. She has been instrumental in our accreditation process. Even recently, when we got re-accredited on March 25th, she was there to the very end, making sure that all the things were taken care of, that all the assessors had everything they needed to make sure that, excuse me, that process went through without any problems. She's been a good friend. She's also been involved in our community for many, many years. If you don't know, her husband was the Highway Patrol Colonel for many years and that her children both worked for the Highway Patrol, so it's really a legacy of public service at her family. She's also done a lot with the Relay for Life program and some of the other benefits and things in our community that she's really been active in. So, we certainly are going to miss her not too much. She's going to be around to help us a little bit with some of the accreditation pieces, but certainly we celebrate her and the service that she's provided to the town and to the police department and to the state. She is also trained. It's not something she did before she came to the police department, but she was a general instructor certification. She handled the certifications for all of the general instructors in the state and she taught many of the police general instructors throughout the state, probably thousands of students throughout the state. She's had her fingers pretty much in a lot of different areas of public safety. So, again, we're appreciative of her efforts and things she's done over the years for us at the police department. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Tom Moss, our former chief, is in the audience with us today and he is the one that caught this one and brought her to the police department years ago from the North Carolina Training and Standards Division. So, we appreciate Chief Moss being here to help us celebrate both hers and Sophia's retirements. You want to say anything?
Please, come forward if you will. The floor is yours.
I just wanted to thank the council, obviously, and Mr. Mayor. Nothing like being put on the spot. And everybody at the police department, they've been so great through the years. I've been very blessed. It's basically great friends, great family, that's what they are. So, I'm very thankful and I'm glad to be able to continue to work in some capacity for the town. It's a great place to be, no pun intended, but it's actually been a wonderful career. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Thank you. Mr. Manager, were you going to our next?
Mayor, if you want to, if y'all want to say comments in between, it's up to you.
Yeah, I was going to recognize any council members who desire to make comments. I know all of our council members know Ms. Clay and so, Mr. Vance, I'll start with you if you have any comments you'd like to make.
Ms. Clay, I want to say that you definitely will be missed and as Chief mentioned, there's a lot of years going out right now, but we know that you're staying close and we wish you well. Thank you so much for your family service and you can't go too far because you've got too much history and we hope to hang on to that history as we make the transition, but thank you so much for your service.
Mr. Dellinger.
I just want to say thank you for your many years of service. There are many ways to help the public stay safe and that is by helping make sure that we have one of the best police departments in the country and it's people like you behind the scenes that help make that happen, so thank you.
Ms. Behringer.
I like Councilmember Vance's remarks. She has history here. There's not a whole lot more we need to say. That covers everything. So, thank you for all you've done, Dana, and for being who you are.
Okay, Mr. Sandlin.
Thank you for your dedication to the job and thank you, as I understand from talking to Chief Moss and Chief Zuderman and other administrators of the police department, for your tedious work with the accreditation process because I understand that can be a real tedious, time-consuming, pain-in-the-butt job. And that's not what I told you. And thank you.
That's what you asked.
That's what you asked? Well, for you, you seem to enjoy it and do well at it, so thank you for that time. I know we've been accredited, accredited in the police department for over 20 years, I believe, or so. So, thank you for your time and dedication to serving the town.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dana, congratulations. I know you're, you're like me, when you retire, you don't really retire, you just think you are. And, but thank you for what you've done to our police department and all the chiefs that you serve and all of our uniformed and non-uniformed officers and you helped make them what they are. And it seemed like every time I go around, I'd see you somewhere doing something. You were busy all the time, but again, enjoy retirement, but don't go too far.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And Ms. Clay, just a couple of things. I certainly would echo all that's been said here by our council. It's been a pleasure to know you during the time that I have. I want to note that when you were selected by your peers to receive the Rob Apple Officer of the Year Award, it's my understanding that that's, you know, one of the highest honors a police officer can receive and I commend you for being selected by your peers for that. Also, it may be credited to Mr. Moss or other police chiefs, but I know the three highlighted items of commitment, integrity, and professionalism. I believe I have a coin that I got from Chief Zuderman that had those items on there. As I understand those words, I would say, and as I understand something about you and your background, that certainly, I believe, you are the epitome of those attributes and for that, I commend you. You've set a good example and I'm amazed, of course, at the number of police officers and other law enforcement people that you have taught over your years of service. That speaks volumes, I think, of your service to your fellow human beings. So, good luck to you in retirement. We expect you not to go away, but to see you around and I'm sure there are lots of other good things that you'll be engaged in, so we wish you the best and thank you again for your service. Okay. All right. Okay, Mr. Manager, I believe we have another presentation.
All right, next, I'm going to call Sergeant Sophia Sandlin up. And she really doesn't like the limelight out here, so we're going to really put her on the spot tonight. I can do it one last time, so. So, Officer Sergeant Sandlin started her career with the Garner Police back in 1993 and back then, gas was a dollar sixteen a gallon. I probably won't see that again. Beanie Babies were launched, so you still got your collection, Sophia? Never had one? Never had one? Oh, wow, okay. The web was born, the YY web that we all enjoy. Popular films Jurassic Park and Sleepless in Seattle. Which one you picking?
Sleepless in Seattle.
Okay, okay, okay. My wife likes that one. And then popular musicians Janet Jackson and Meatloaf. Janet, okay, all right, good choice. All right. All right. All right, on a serious note, so May 1st, she will be retiring and will have 30 years of credible service to the town of Garner. She began as a police officer, patrol officer, where she served as a field training officer, so she helped train some of the newer police officers that came onboard and through her technique and knowledge, she became well-known as one of the best field training officers the town has ever had in the police department. She received crisis intervention training and subsequently helped many people over the years who were experiencing mental health crises. She led a platoon starting in 2010 and then in 2016, Sergeant Sandlin was assigned as a community services supervisor. There, she managed several of the other divisions in the police department, including the Citizens Police Together team. And she's never forgotten what it meant to serve the community. She served as a volunteer in the SCORE program, which is the second grade reading program that many of us volunteered in and also with SHOP with the COP program, where we shop for gifts for families that are in need in the Garner community. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention also that she's the first African-American female to retire from the police department in the town of Garner, so. So, I'll turn it back over to Chief Benz for more comments.
You know that look you get from your mom when you did something wrong? That's the look you get from Sophia if you messed up. Ask any of her trainees, they will, I'll tell you what that look looks like, especially first thing in the morning because you don't talk to Sophia before breakfast. That's true, yes. So, Sophia has certainly, excuse me, 28 years. I mean, that's just a lot of time. She has been instrumental in a lot of different things around the department. She has put her footprint in many places. CIT is probably the biggest crisis intervention training, probably, excuse me, been one of the biggest footprints that she's had, that's dealing with those with the mental concerns and mental consumers. She has been big in that program and making sure all of our officers have been through that program, learning how to de-escalate situations with that population. She's been real big in that. She's also been involved in a lot of service, not only to the town of Garner, but she spent a lot of summers over in Puerto Rico doing service over there with different groups, feeding, I think y'all worked in the kitchen, a lot of stuff for some of the service groups she did. So, she's been very service-oriented throughout her entire career. She's been involved, again, if those have been through the Citizens Police Academy will know Sophia real well, and that's where she made a lot of good contacts in the community. She was our community services sergeant for many years, did just an outstanding job with that and with our CAP team. So, obviously, again, a lot of service, a lot of time. She has probably trained half of our police officers that work here now and they are who they are because of her service and because of her dedication to that. And we will certainly miss her over the next little bit, so we appreciate your service and thank you for everything you've done for us. And of course, noticing the room is full between Dana and Sophia, they certainly have made an impact on a lot of members of this community, so thank you.
First of all, I just want to say thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Sandlin. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity that I was given to serve Garner. It's been a pleasure, my honor to do my service. Thank you, Chief Moss, for hiring me some years ago. The fabulous three that you hired that year, myself, Chris Clayton, and Michael Denning. And what can I say? It's just been, it's been a great ride. I've enjoyed it. Thank God that I made it this far because it's been a long journey, but yeah, I wouldn't do anything to change too much of it. It's just been a great experience being here in Garner and I appreciate what y'all have done for me and what I could do for you. Thank you.
I'm sure our council members will want to say a personal word to you, so I'll start with Mr. Matthews this time and.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this lady's a legend. And our town is so much better off for you doing what you have done all these many years and it's like she said, you don't, you keep a low profile, but you can look all around and see the things that you have made possible and made happen and all your peers, they thank the world of you because I talk to them all the time and they say, we're going to lose, we're going to lose a good one, we're going to lose a good one. So, hopefully, it won't drift too far away. And again, congratulations on your retirement. You've certainly earned it and thank you for what you've done to make our town a whole lot better. You will be missed.
Mr. Singleton.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, about a week ago, I was going down Lakeside Drive, get to Highway 50, get to the stop sign, there's a car there with the hood up. I see the motorists and I get closer, I see a police car and who's there helping the motorists? Sergeant Sandlin, who's out there helping them. And she's done that and helped people all over Garner for all her 28-plus years. Thank you for your time and for your dedication and for your outstanding service to the town. Greatly appreciated.
Okay, Ms. Behringer.
Yes. I didn't know until tonight that Sergeant Sandlin and I both moved to Garner the same year, so I will never forget or stop hurting from you leaving now. And I know over the years, when we've interacted, everything that comes out of her mouth is just good old common sense and it works. Something you can do, put into practice, and see results and it's just, you've been such a blessing to all of us in so many ways. So, I'm just going to kind of wrap up by saying that when my now 43-year-old son was four years old, every day when I would go to work, he would throw his hands over his eyes and go, mommy, don't go. So, I'm going to say, Sophia, don't go. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So, before I was up here, I was poking my nose around, trying to figure out what our police department was all about and so I went to Citizens Academy and there you were and I was like, well, she's pretty amazing, but what about the rest of them? And you go around, they're all great. And it's just like. And you go around, they're all great. And it's just like, you embody the culture of this department. And it's just, I think between the two of you, there's just such, this strong culture of community and service. And I don't think it's leaving, because you've left it behind. So, thank you so much for your service.
Mr. Vance.
Sergeant Sandlin, again, thank you so much for your service. The number of years are incredible. And I have seen you in action. One thing I will say, one that I noticed your dedication, which was important, and also, in this day and age, the professionalism which you handle a situation which you're in. And you were right there on the job. And you will be missed, but you also shall be remembered. Thank you so much for your service.
Okay. And I would just simply add that it's been my pleasure to, to come to know you through my election to the town's council and now as mayor. But, yeah, I think you, you epitomize what we'd like to see in our police officers. And I think it's certainly worthy of note, and I will note it here, that you probably came into policing at a time when females were still not so dominant in the, in the department. And so, it's to your credit that you've probably set some, some, some standards there and paved the way for others. And also, as an African-American female as well, you, that, that should be noted as well. So, just appreciate your, your, the way you've handled yourself over the years. And I would just note that in the last paragraph, it says that you've demonstrated that service is at the center of what you do. I'm not sure there's a higher accolade you could give to somebody who is retiring from police work. It's a difficult job. We all know the challenges that are there, have been in the past and are there now. But to say that, you know, your mantra was, was service is, speaks volumes to me about who you are and about the way you approach your job. So, like with Ms. Clay, wish you well in retirement. We're not gonna let you two ladies just go away and do nothing, and I know you wouldn't do that anyway. But we hope to still engage you around town in a variety of different ways. And again, just, just thank you on behalf of the citizens of Garner. And, and have fun, some fun in retirement, but keep that service at the center of your core, and you'll do well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Need a picture of all four, or three, or however many you want?
Some pictures.
We're gonna put you on the spot as long as we can.
Come on over, yeah. Get in front of the seal, why don't you? Good to see you.
All right, look to me, please. I'm not sure what the manager thinks about that. I'll have to defer to the manager. All right, real quick, one more. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you. See you around town, okay?
We'll join the party if we get out of here soon enough.
Mr. Manager, I believe, do we have another presentation from the chief?
Yeah, the second.
Okay, okay. So, he's not going yet. I do want to take just another minute. I know I've mentioned his name earlier. But Chief Moss, thank you for being here tonight. I've known him over the years, and he was chief, I believe, when I started serving on the council. I've admired your work over the years, sir. And so, so good to see you. You've, you've trained a lot of these officers and hired them. So, you've had a lot of impact on the town of Garner through your work. Thank you, sir. Okay, Chief Benz, I believe you have another presentation to make at this time, sir.
Yes, sir. I'll try to be as pre-brief with this, but I think it was important to bring some numbers and some information to the council and to the town. Typically, we try to produce our year annual report, but at the first of the year, but it generally doesn't make it into about July. It seems like this with a lot of things going on and trying to put all that information together. So, what we decided to do this year, and I met with Rick and Captain Clayton, and we worked real hard to, to put together a one-page kind of front and back info sheet that we're gonna try to make sure is available as soon as possible after the, the end of the year. So, we get a, just a general idea, a snapshot of what the, so the public can get a general idea, a snapshot of what the police department looked like for that last year, I'm gonna take this off, looked like for the last year. It'll be a supplemental, the annual report will come after the fact. It'll be much more detailed and much more thorough. But we just thought it was important, excuse me, to put some numbers out there, just to kind of get, get that information out there. So, I said, Rick and Captain Clayton and I kind of worked together on this. We looked at the population and calls for service and just kind of looking at ways to project what that's gonna look like over the next five years. If you notice that the bar graph to start with, population, calls for service, we expect by 2025 to have right around 57,000 calls for service, based on the population growth and expected growth that's already coming to Garner and already in the, in the works right now, with an additional need for additional officers. And obviously, we put that as part of the budget. In 2020, we had 70 sworn officers. We were not fully staffed during that entire time, but that was the number of positions that we had. We made 807 arrests in 2020. If you notice that a lot of these statistics are gonna be much lower, and we attribute that mostly to COVID, because I think that March, April, and May of last year, when, when everything shut down, we pretty much shut down. There was, there was really, you know, the doors rolled up and there was nobody out. There was no shopliftings going on. There was no, there was just a lot of things that just weren't happening during that time period. Picked back up closer to the end of the year, but, but that's where our numbers were. So, we had, it said 807 arrests. We had 1,140 in 2019, just to let you compare with what was in 2019. Crime rates, 36.9 for Part One crimes. That is actually down 13.6%. We were at 42 Part One crimes before, in 2019. 7.5 Part One crimes, person crimes. And that is also down from 9.06, which is about 18, 18 points, 18.8% reduction. Part One property crimes was also down, 29.4. It was 33.03 the year before that. So, we, all of our crime, as you can tell from the COVID piece and everything else that went on last year, all the property crime as well was down, as well as person crimes. Traffic stops as well. If you look at the numbers, we had 5,117 traffic stops, which is down about 20%, 19% from the year before. We also had a diff, a reduction in the number of citations issued, pretty dramatic, actually. We had 1,610 last year. In 2020, the year before that, we were at 4,500. So, we had a really large reduction in traffic enforcement. Again, we were, we've set up some, some steps during the pandemic to make sure our officers stayed safer. So, we really tried to make sure that we weren't putting people in court, because court was closed and those kinds of things. So, we had to limit how much enforcement we actually did. But I would like to say that, you know, we, we kept pretty steady, even, even if 5,000 traffic stops is a lot during that period of time. So, we kept up the enforcement. We just didn't, we didn't do the citations on the other end of that. So, DWI arrests were also down. Can say right now, we're, we're about half that number for this year already in April. So, that has certainly picked back up with, with everybody out, and the bars opening back up and everything else. So, there's just basic numbers there on the backside. We had to focus on training, and it's important to recognize, especially today, excuse me, with the amount of, of concern there is for police officers, police officer de-escalation, all the different things that are going on with the training piece of, of law enforcement today, that we did manage to have 6,522 hours of training for our department, which is really a large amount. A lot of that's in service. A lot of that is, is focused on use of force training and that kind of thing. So, we have stiffed that up a little bit, 11,163 classes. Narcan use, something that, that you allowed us to implement last year with some asset forfeiture money. We had, we actually almost doubled the number of overdoses we had in 2020 compared to 2019. Think of those numbers. I think there was about 28 in 2019, and we went to 48. But we actually had seven saves. So, seven, seven people were saved because of the Narcan that we're now carrying in our patrol cars. We have one that we saw on video. It was really amazing to watch, because our officers have always responded to overdoses. But when they get there, the only thing they had to do, the only thing they could do at that point was do CPR on a, on a, on a victim. So, now we're able to administer Narcan, and we, we brought it back and saved seven lives. And that's certainly something that we should recognize. Animal complaints, animal-related calls, animal calls are always a big, big thing. I think at some point, we're gonna come forward with the request for additional animal control officer at some point in the budget, since we start, continue to grow. We're gonna have that need coming forward. Use of force, our use of forces were down about 21%, 26. Use of force last year, down from 33. 10 of those were pointed weapons. So, one actually, wasn't actually physical force, it was just pointing a weapon. So, bring that down to about 16. We had 18 complaints on our officers. Only four of those came from the community. So, the rest of those were supervisor observed complaints, things that, that officers, supervisors recognized as policy violations that they handled within the department and took care of with their internal discipline process. Community involvement, we've, obviously, was, was a little bit lower last year, but we did manage to participate in a lot of different events. We continued with POW. Barbershop wrap sessions continued, even though it was on a very minor basis. We had myself and one of our other officers would go into the barber shops every once a month on Saturdays and, and really interact and try to keep those bridges available before we, as the pandemic is continued on, and there were limited in the number of people they could have in the barber shop. So, we, we felt that was important to keep those bridges open, continue those discussions that we've had. I think they've been very beneficial to us as well as the, the folks in the barber shops. Virtual chat with the cop, in fact, we're doing one of those tomorrow. That's, that's taken off a little bit, so we couldn't do that coffee with the cop that we've typically done at McDonald's or, or some of the other venues. So, we turned that into a virtual chat with the cop. So, we, we do that Facebook Live, and we're trying to continue to make sure that we make that accessible to the public, even in a virtual format. We also did Citizens Police Academy twice during, in a virtual manner. So, we were able to move that to a virtual platform, a little bit of moving around and moving parts a little bit different. We're hoping to get back to in-person, because I think that's certainly much a better avenue if we can do that. But, but virtual works, and it's been able to allow us to host that and continue to have that available to our public. Shop with the cop looked a lot different this year. We actually had our platoons go out and shop, thanks to the generous donations from TT&E and others. And we were able to go out and actually shop at the Walmart. We brought the presents back to the police department, we wrapped them, and then we took them to the families. So, we were able, even though we couldn't meet at the Walmart, we actually did that on the other end. So, we took, we did the shopping based on lists that we had. And then the policing community engagement, I think Mr. Vance was present for, was an opportunity for us to interact with various churches in the community. It was a very successful, it was lightly attended, but I think it was pretty successful in what we were trying to do at the time. And we're continuing to look forward to having more of those as we move forward. We did have a lot, this is not necessarily on here, but a lot of promotions last year with some of the movement that we had. We hired, we've hired in the last 12 months, 18 officers. So, we have a lot of new people in the police department. You'll see a lot of new faces. At some point, we'd like to bring those folks around, so you could at least get eyes on them, lay eyes on them, so you get to maybe know them a little bit. But we've, we've certainly done a good job with, with that and bringing in some really good talent, I think. We have some good officers that are very community-focused, very community-oriented, and I'm very proud of the, the work that we've done in recruitment and some of the things that we've done as far as recruiting minorities and women. So, we were trying to push those efforts a lot as well over the last year. But we did do some promotions, obviously Captain Clayton, Lieutenant Adams, several sergeants and the corporals that you approved last year in the budget. Those folks are, are coming onboard and are ready as we start moving through. And again, as we continue to grow, some of the things that we're looking forward is how do we deploy resources in the community to make sure that we're having the most, best impact and, and not just responding to 911 calls, but actually going to places that we know are, 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 would benefit from additional officers in the area. And as we start, again, adding officers and the need for increased personnel, we're gonna need that extra leadership in there to help manage those and keep that span of control where it should be. And obviously, we need to make sure our new leaders coming in tomorrow, tomorrow are ready to step up and take, take the reins as we start losing folks like Sergeant Sandlin. So, any questions? I'll open that up. Again, this was just very, very short. It was just an opportunity to try to get some of the important numbers that we thought that the community might want to know about out there. The more detailed annual reports being worked on right now, and hopefully we'll have that out sooner than later, probably towards the end of May.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Benz. And, yeah, I'm gonna give a council opportunity to have questions and just remind them that this is not a formal, your, your formal big report, but certainly a prelude to some things. And so, there'll be other times, I'm sure, to, to follow up on questions. So, with that being said, I'll, I'll begin with Ms. Behringer, if she has any questions or comments.
No questions. I'm just really glad to see this, and I appreciate the, the hard work that the police department does every day without, without a lot of thanks.
Thank you.
We hear when people are not happy, but we seldom hear when they are. And I'm sure there's just as many who are happy as, as others, maybe more. So, getting this information out is, is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Singleton.
Thank you, Chief, for presenting the information. Thank you for the job that you and all the other officers do. It's a tough world out there nowadays, especially in the United States. And, you know, Mr. Dellinger just said, well, we got one of the best police departments in the country. So, thank you for your time and, and your hard work.
Okay. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Chief. Those numbers, I like looking at numbers like that, and that those are very positive. And it says a lot about our police department and the caliber of the officers from chief right on down to our captains and lieutenants and sergeants and corporals, which I was glad we could do that. And so, just keep on doing what you're doing. I'm glad we can get those slots filled. And I think, I feel comfortable saying, this board really stands behind our police department. So, you guys are the best, and we'll always be here for you. Thank you for what you do.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger.
Chief, thank you for the information, and thank you and the whole department for all your hard work. When you do your jobs well and right, people barely notice. And, but we appreciate that very much. So, thank you.
Vance.
Yes, Chief. Thank you again, as everyone else said, for the service that's being rendered by the police department and what you're doing in the community that doesn't get seen, such as the wrap sessions. I've enjoyed them, and just to watch the interaction and developing those relationships, in my opinion, are very important, because when you go into a situation, you may know the person. And if you develop a relationship with them, it's better than not knowing the person and going into a situation. And it's the same with the, the recent event with the churches. I thought that it was a good event. I was surprised to be, and I was honored to be asked to speak for the occasion. And just keep doing, doing what you're doing. And integrity, professionalism is important, and you know that. And just keep doing a good job that you're doing.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
And Chief, I would just say, as, as a new mayor of the town, I, I've really appreciated the opportunity to get to know you better and to participate with you in, in different meetings, some having to do with neighborhood disputes and a variety of other things. But I've always appreciated your, your perspective based on the experience that you've gained over the years. And it's meant a lot to me to help me understand even more about you and your department. And as has been said by this council, we appreciate the, the work and service that you provide to the citizens of Garner every day.
Appreciate that.
So, keep up the good work, sir, and thank you for this information.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for your time.
All right. Mr. Hodges, I'm going to, before I go to the next section, do I need to see if there are, are there folks in a waiting area that are waiting to come into?
Folks from all of our planning cases are outside, so I think staff is gonna be helping them get into the room. But I'll, I think David, the first case is, can you let staff know for the first couple of cases to come in?
Okay, so they can do that while we're approving the next items on the agenda here. Thank you very much. So, council, we are now to the consent agenda. And as you will note, there are about five different items on the consent agenda. And so, unless council has a desire to pull any one of those items, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Sock it.
Okay, properly motion and seconded. Any council have a question or comment before we vote? Okay, if you approve the consent agenda, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none. So, the consent agenda is approved. Okay. Next item of business are a number of public hearings. I should note that interested parties can participate in public hearings by either appearing in person or through the virtual meeting platform. An online forum is available. And of course, there's a, there's a site that one can go to, www.garnernc. And of course, there's a, there's a site that one can go to, www.garnernc.gov, government/towncouncil/towncouncilagendas and minutes for more information. And I believe I should also note that for all public hearings on the agenda, written comments may be submitted up to 24 hours after the public hearing. Is that still in effect, Mr.?
That's only in effect for a remote meeting. However, most of these items are being referred to the planning commission, so if you wanted to entertain additional comments after the public hearing, you could.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So I believe those are the prefacing comments I wanted to make, and we are now ready to move to our first hearing, is that correct? And I'm going to recognize Mr. Banford for his, for his presentation. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I think I got the sequence a little bit off. Mr. Bowie, I see standing.
Sure, I'm just checking the PowerPoint just real quick.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Bowie, I wasn't trying to leave you out, you're, you're up, you're up, you're up first, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At a work session on March 30th, we introduced a text amendment by Mr. Thomas H. Johnson, Jr., to allow cell towers in the Lake Benson Conservation District. The reason for the request is that a cell tower located at 828 Thompson Road is being discontinued, and by discontinuing that, that tower, they're going to create a gap in the service for that area.
Put it in presentation mode, please.
During the analysis of the request, the town made contact with the city of Raleigh Water and Wake County Planning Department, and neither of those entities had any issues or concerns with the request. I'm not going to bother going through the current text, the text, it has a lot of the permitted uses there, which you're fully aware of. But the proposed text changed by the applicant, the primary text stays the same, the only addition will be that the tower shall be, tower shall not be allowed on Lake Benson Conservation overly district except upon approval by the town council. That is the only change that will be happening if it is approved. The consistency of requests, when considering a text amendment, the planning commission is required to, by state statute, to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted plans. These plans include the 2018 Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, the 2010-2018 Garner Transportation Plan, and the Parks, Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. Reasonableness, in addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency upon the advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Sources of reasonableness may include other sections of the 2018 Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, providing guidance on keeping the town's character, living spaces, working places, recreation opportunities, and transportation. Other adopted town plans and policies provide guidance, providing guidance on parks, greenways, cultural resources, and more, more may serve as sources as well. Staff recommends that once the town council has heard any comments or questions by the general public, that the text amendment, UDO 21, will be referred to the planning commission for their review and a recommendation regarding the request consistency. Are there any questions from the council?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie, and I think we'll be hearing from other persons as well, but I should have noted this is officially opening the public hearing, and so council, I'll start with, with Mr. Dellinger, if there are any questions or comments.
None at this time.
Okay, Ms. Behringler?
No, sir.
Mr. Vance?
No questions at this time.
Okay, on this end, Mr. Matthews and Mr. Singleton.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay, help me in recognizing who will be the next person who is scheduled to appear and make comments on this matter? Is the attorney here who?
No, I have not spoken with him, I do not believe he's here.
Okay, okay, so he's not. Are there other persons who are here this evening who came prepared to speak to this particular issue? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Nobody else on town staff is speaking to this, right?
No, sir. Don't list those.
All right, so I believe, having presented this, the, the request that is being made is for the council to forward this to the planning commission for consistency review and further recommendation. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, I do have two questions, I thought there might have been someone else.
Okay, sure.
I apologize.
Go right ahead.
Just two questions. There was a mention of a gap in, in service. What evidence has been presented to staff that there is a creation of a gap in service by losing this tower?
I'm sorry, I did not understand.
What evidence has been presented to the staff that demonstrates this, this gap in coverage?
We've met with a couple of, we've met with a couple of different service providers on that tower, and they've shown us maps of where their other, where their other towers are and the strength of the signal that comes with it, and there is, there is a gap that we have seen from those studies.
And my other question is, what are the, we previously did a change to the ordinance regarding setbacks and sorts of things for towers. What implication does that have on the, on the available sites within the Conservation District? And have those sites been identified, and how many are there?
Yeah, so the, the previous amendment addressed the fall radius. You still have these same restrictions as far as adjacency to certain other uses, and so we thought that by making that amendment in combination with the districts where towers were allowed, that these sites in Lake Benson would have been allowed. And then we found out later, there was a separate list of uses, again, our uses are scattered all throughout the ordinance, discovered that the overlay prohibited them. So what we were expecting as part of the resolution from that previous amendment actually did not happen because the conservation overlay had the restriction. So we thought that they would be allowed in the R40, but because of the overlay that sits on top of it, it was not.
We changed the other ordinance and we didn't need to?
No, well, we still, there, there's still challenges in areas outside of the overlay. This just created an additional challenge in an area where we were not expecting one.
Because it seems, and I guess we've got a planning commission and it'll come back to us, but it, it seems like if this change had been made, there would have been the opening of other sites and opportunities within the overlay district.
Right.
And now it seems like now because of the previous ordinance change, there are going to be even more, and so there are more locations that are potentially viable, so.
Yeah, we can, we can come back and, and provide, provide more information both at planning commission and at the follow-up where y'all are making the, making the final decision on that. I think the previous one, what we'll see is that there's other corridors in town that are just as challenged by the, what the previous limitations were before the last amendment, such as the, you know, Highway 70 and Garner Road. So it, it will provide some flexibility in those areas as well. Yeah, but what we'll get, we'll do a little more analysis on that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Reginald, and not seeing anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue, I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion. You see the request from staff that this be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
That was moved.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All who are in favor of the, the motion to refer this to the planning commission, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and it is so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Bowie, for your presentation. Okay, the next item, Mr. Banford is, is the lead presenter on that. CZ 2102, conditional district zoning, Rosemore. So, Mr. Banford, I'm going to open the public hearing and recognize you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a conditional district zoning request. This does not have a site plan attached to it, so there are written proposed conditions with this application. The rezoning site is in Rosemore subdivision off of Buffalo Road. The approximate acreage of the rezoning area is 17.13 acres. And Rosemore subdivision was approved for 41 lots. 14 lots are developed with homes. There are 26 lots left to be built on, and out of those 26 lots, 25 are part of the rezoning request before you tonight. So one property owner was not included in this request. So the vicinity map here shows the properties outlined in black that are part of this zoning change, and the properties in the subdivision that are not highlighted will remain the zoning that it is currently. This is a Google Street View of the subdivision, and these pictures show the vacant lots left to be built on. Looking at the current zoning in this area, the subdivision is, is zoned R20, conditional use. To the north, we have Autumn Oaks, which is zone R12, conditional use district 99. To the south, we have Lake Benson. To the east, we have Dunhaven subdivision, zone R20. To the west, we have Lake Benson Park, Lord of Life Lutheran Church. Both of those are zoned, well, the, the park's zoned R40, and the, the church, I believe, is zoned R40 as well. This is a list of zoning cases in this area of Garner. Summer's Walk was rezoned in 1995 from R40 and R12, or from R40 to R12. Autumn Oaks was rezoned in 2000 from R40 to R12, conditional use district 99. And Rosemore subdivision was rezoned in 2004 from R40 to R20, conditional use district So going over the existing zoning of the entire neighborhood, it is zoned residential 20, conditional use district 129. This allows single-family lots of at least 20,000 square feet. Under the current zoning, all R20 uses would be permissible. In addition to uses, there are conditions on the homes to be constructed. Two-car garage minimums are required. 80% brick or stone is required on the exterior. Total heat of square footage for each home is 3,100, and the minimum first floor heat of square footage is 2,700. So these are the current zoning conditions of the subdivision. The proposed zoning conditions of those 25 lots are as follows. All R20 uses would be permissible except child daycare up to eight, this would be prohibited. So all the other R20 uses would be permissible, and those are on the following charts. In addition to the proposed list of permissible uses, the applicants have proposed some zoning conditions, and these would supersede the existing ones. Each home shall have a minimum of a three-car garage with entry from the side or rear yard. Each home shall have a minimum of 70% brick or stone finish on the front and side elevations, and a minimum of 35% brick or stone finish on the rear elevations, exclusive of windows, doors, and trim. Next, no vinyl or Masonite siding shall be allowed. Each home shall have a minimum total heat of square footage of 3,100 square feet, and that condition will not, has not changed from the existing, so the total heat of square footage will stay the same. However, the minimum heat of square footage will be a minimum of 2,500 square feet, and this is a change from 2,700. No traffic impact analysis was required as part of this zoning request. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on March the 9th, and it was held remotely. Sixty, approximately 61 properties were identified within the notification radius, and according to the minutes, which is in your staff report, two neighboring property owners were in attendance. Consistency of request, when considering a rezoning request, the planning commission is required by state statute to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted plans, and this includes the Garner Ford Land Use Plan and also the Garner Ford Transportation Plan, as well as the Parks and Recreation Greenway and Cultural Resources Master Plan. Reasonableness, in addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency, upon the advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Sources of reasonableness may include other sections of the Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, providing guidance on keeping the town's character, living spaces, working spaces, recreation opportunities, and transportation. Other adopted town plans and policies providing guidance on parks, greenways, cultural resources, and more may serve as sources as well. Staff recommends that once the town council conducts the public hearing and hears comments from the public, that this case be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding the request's consistency. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Banford. So council, your opportunity to make inquiry, ask questions. I'll start with Councilmember Vance.
No questions at this moment.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Just a quick question, I don't know if this is a 160D change, the conditional district rezoning. I thought, was, is it one of the changes? I thought, was, is it one of the changes that they would come with this zoning change and remove certain uses? Like they would, is that one of the features of it? And then it's optional?
One of the, one of the changes with 160D is that property owners and applicants can file a conditional district zoning request without a site plan. They have to submit written conditions, which could include limiting the range of uses and also some conditions that would apply to architecture or construction.
But not the, not the categories that are listed?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Sperringer?
No questions.
Okay. Okay, thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Banford. Let's see, I believe you said the applicant is here. Does that person wish to speak at this time? I recognize, excuse me, Mr. Roberts. Please state your name and address, sir.
Sir, good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And members of council, Keith Roberts, 202 Bonica Creek Drive here in Garner. And I appreciate your support on this tonight. The main purpose in this was really twofold. One, to get the zoning conditions more in line with the existing covenants. There's, as most of you know, the neighborhood's been there for quite some time. We were reminded, I stood before this Town Council 17 years ago, talking about this project. And over that time, only about 14 homes have sold in there. But recently, there's been quite a bit of activity going on in the neighborhood. There's three or four homes or lots have sold in the last probably two or three months. So that's exciting to see. And what this does is give a little more flexibility. You know, 17 years ago, architectural styles were a little bit different than what they are today. So this gets us more in line with what the new buyer today is looking for, with a little more opportunity on the, on the architectural side. And again, to get the covenants more in line with the, with the zoning, so. Here for any questions you may have.
Okay, council, I'll ask in general, and just, okay, none? Anybody? I believe not, Mr. Roberts, so thank you for being here, sir. Are there other persons here this evening who wish to speak to this issue? If so, would you please indicate that by raising your hand or standing up, and I'll recognize you. Okay. All right. Hearing and seeing none, I believe I can close the public hearing at this time. Public hearing is closed, and I'll call for a motion from council. And you'll note the recommendation is, again, to refer this matter to the Planning Commission, and it'll come back to us.
I move. Second?
Okay, motion made and properly seconded. Mr. Matthews and Mr. Singleton. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Council, I'll ask you to vote. If you approve the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, vote no. And it is approved unanimously. So, thank you, Mr. Banford and Mr. Roberts. So that will be referred to the Planning Commission. Excuse me. Next item is CZ, it's be 2005 White Oak Ridge, conditional district rezoning. And Mr. Banford, I believe you're the lead person on that as well, so I'm gonna, excuse me.
He is.
Oh, okay. Well, at any rate, I'm gonna open the public hearing and recognize either you or him or both of you.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, we just want to give you a little preview at this step, since now we're going to be introducing plans associated with your rezoning requests. So this is where things start to be a little more noticeable as far as the changes go. You will have seen some things from the previous two presentations where we talked about, more specifically, the consistency and the reasonableness, as that has been much more streamlined within 160D, and is the same for both text amendments and map amendments. So for a while, you'll see us kind of just pointing that out so that everybody kind of knows and can be familiarized with the process and how things will be moving through and what parts have to be addressed at which, at which point in the process. Normally, we would have kind of two separate presentations in the past. We've still kind of marked a few points in the presentation where we're gonna just kind of let you know that we're shifting gears a little bit because of the way we used to do things. But this is just one public hearing, and so we will, if you want us to pause at any point, let us know, but otherwise, we're just gonna try and proceed through the entire presentation. And you can see the, the experts here behind me, and so they will try to just seamlessly rotate in and out from the podium to discuss the various parts of the whole rezoning package, of which now your subdivision or site plan is a part of. And one thing to keep in mind is we are separating out the use from these plans. The use actually gets approved later now, either through a zoning compliance permit at staff level, or through a special use permit, depending on how it's called out in the ordinance by you. So some of these, it may be a little easier in your head to separate those. For others, the zoning and the use are very intrinsically connected, particularly with apartments and multifamily. But we'll try to point things out along the way to help you kind of keep those things separated. But just wanted to give you that preface, and with that, we'll, I'll turn it over to David for this first case.
Okay. Mr. Treesburg, I guess these persons could introduce themselves for the benefit of the public, or do you desire to go ahead and introduce the staff members who are gonna be presenting?
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Yep, that's fine. So David Banford, our Planning Services Manager, will be addressing the zoning and rezoning portions. And then we have Gabby Lontos, who's our senior planner for transportation. She'll, she will step in and address traffic as well as road improvements. And then Stacy Harper, our principal planner for plan review, she will address either the subdivision or site plan. For one of the cases, Allison Jones will step in for her as our planner, too, for that particular case that was assigned to her.
Thank you, sir. All well-known to this council, but maybe not to the general public, so thank you for the introduction. Mr. Banford?
Mayor and members of council, this is a conditional zoning request. Project is called White Oak Ridge. The property is on Highway 70 East, near the intersection of White Oak Road. The rezoning acreage is approximately 24.79 acres. This is a vicinity map of the rezoning site outlined in orange. This is across the street from Morris and Associates. This is on the south side of Highway 70, on the southwest corner of the intersection of 70 and White Oak Road. The rezoning site is directly east of Management Way. This is a Google Street View, looking east on Highway 70, and there are some buildings, also some vacant land. And the rezoning site would include all of this area here on the right side of the road as you're traveling east. This is a zoning map of this area of Garner. To the north, we have commercial and light industrial uses. We have service business zoning, light industrial zoning, I-1. To the south, we have community retail zoning. There's a large tract of vacant land. To the west, we have service business zoning and light industrial zoning, some flex space, a business park to the west. To the east, we have some more community retail zoning. We have White Oak Shopping Center, which has community retail zoning and mixed-use district zoning. And I guess to the northeast, we have service business zoning. And this is the White Oak Northwest Development. This is a list of rezoning cases in this area of Garner. The oldest case we could find was from 1986. The most recent case was from 2001, and this included some land along Timber Drive East. So we've had some zonings in the late 80s, early 90s, and also the late 90s. The zoning of the site is, it has several different zoning districts. I will try to break it down. Approximately 20.86 acres are zoned community retail, general use, so all community retail uses would be permissible. 1.75 acres of the site is zoned service business, general use, so all SB uses would be permissible, and the Highway 70 overlay would apply. Approximately 0.54 acres are zoned service business, conditional use District 26, and there are conditions in place that restrict the permissible uses to only auto repair and auto body shops with no outdoor storage. And lastly, part of the rezoning site, there's 1.6 acres zoned service business, conditional use District 52. And this district limits the range of service business uses. It does restrict outdoor storage to vehicles, utility, and horse trailers only. The proposed zoning of the entire site is community retail, conditional use District 232, and there are 42 uses proposed from a list of 52. And community retail zoning does not allow uses with outdoor storage or outdoor operations. So this is a list of the proposed uses for the site. We have uses under household living, community service, educational facilities and services, government facilities, uses under healthcare, institutional uses, uses that allow religious institutions, parks and open space, utilities, entertainment, office uses, overnight accommodations, commercial parking, retail sales and service, and restaurant uses. In addition to the list of proposed uses, another condition is that the development of this site shall be completed in conformance with the approved preliminary subdivision plan. There is a subdivision plan proposed for the site for, I believe, five commercial I will pause here and let Gabby pick up and go over the transportation information.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good evening, Ms. Lola.
Good evening. Thanks, David. So I'll just cover the TIA portion. So a traffic impact analysis was not required for the rezoning accompanied with the proposed five-lot commercial subdivision that would come at the, the site plan portion. So a TIA may be required at the time that a site plan is submitted for review on each individual lot, depending on whether the projected traffic generation warrants it.
Next, we'll talk about the neighborhood meeting. There were approximately 110 properties within the notification buffer. The neighborhood meeting was held remotely on December the 18th, 2020, with about three neighboring owners in attendance. And there were, I believe, two owners that called in prior to the meeting to ask questions. And more information is, is in your staff report. So I will stop here and let Stacy pick up and go over the subdivision plan proposal.
Thanks, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Again, this is the subdivision plan proposal that will be a condition of the zoning. The proposal at this time is for a conditional district with accompanying commercial subdivision. The subdivision itself is a total of 24.79 acres, and you see the parcels listed below that, that make up that 24.79. Then there is a right-of-way parcel and the internal roads parcel as well. For the buffer and tree coverage requirements, they are preserving 10%, which is the requirement at this time, 2.48 acres. And the canopy will increase as the sites develop and the required landscaping is added at that time. The perimeter buffers are shown at 15 feet, which is based on the most likely uses within the subdivision, with the uses that we already know to the west and the undeveloped zoning to the south and east. We will evaluate those buffers as site plans come in for approval, though. The street buffers are presumed to be 15 feet, based on the assumption that all uses are retail and will fall within the Class III buffer designation. Street buffers, again, will be further evaluated at the time of site plan submittal. And they are showing the street trees provided along every, approximately every 40 feet along both the Jones Sausage, both sides of that, and the internal road, both sides of that, and on their side of US 70. There, this parcel is not located within a property acquisition area, and there's no open space required as this is a commercial development. The inspections Department, together with the Fire Department, has reviewed and approved. There's a riparian buffer on the property that is being protected in accordance with state rules. For stormwater management, White Oak Ridge is subject to the nitrogen requirements for quality as well as the quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. The development does propose a sand filter with vegetated filter strip, as well as a wet retention pond to treat impervious surface. These devices will satisfy all of the water quality and quantity requirements for nitrogen and will detain the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. And a nitrogen offset payment will also be required. The site will be served with City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer. And Gabby was gonna talk about the transportation improvements with you.
So first, going through the road and sidewalk improvements. The site contains a portion of the future extended Jones Sausage Road alignment, which will be constructed with this development in order to keep consistent with the transportation plan. And that, that cross-section, or that, that roadway will be a four-lane divided facility with curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides. At the intersection, there will be two dedicated left-turn lanes onto the westbound US Highway 70. And a dedicated left-turn lane will also be provided on southbound Jones Sausage Road onto the private road serving the development. And there will be two private roads constructed to serve the tracks within the subdivision. In terms of frontage improvements, Highway 70 in this area is, is recommended as a six-lane divided facility. So two dedicated right-turn lanes will be provided, will be installed off of eastbound Highway 70, one onto Jones Sausage Road and one onto the site driveway to the east. Also, an asphalt multi-use path will be constructed in lieu of sidewalk along the US Highway
Before you, you do see the subdivision plan with the Jones Sausage extension labeled as well as 70. Then you have the two internal roads that are pointed out for you there. The stormwater is at the low part of this slide. You'll see the stormwater devices there as well. The street lighting has been evaluated and approved by the engineering department at this time. Site lighting will be looked at as site plans come in for evaluation. And David will go over the next steps for you.
To summarize this To summarize this page, plan consistency will be done at the planning commission meeting, and plan reasonableness will be done at the town council when they make a final decision after the planning commission meeting. And that concludes our presentation. Staff recommends that once the council has conducted the public hearing, that this case be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency. And we will be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here tonight.
Okay, we'll start with you and staff members and your good presentation. Thank you. I'm going to start with Ms. Behringer this time, if she has questions.
No, sir.
Mr. Singleton?
Based off the partial information and looking at the site plan, we have two separate stormwater parcels, one for, I reckon, this parcel, and then one's for Highway 70. There's two separate stormwater parcels. Is that correct? I'm looking, I'm just reading the parcel D and E, then looking on here, looks like two separate stormwater parcels. Am I reading that right or am I wrong on that?
Yeah, I think one is, excuse me, I think one is specifically for the runoff from the roadways. I believe, yes.
Okay. And there's, there's a parcel D?
They don't normally get labeled that way. I think they're just labeled that.
Okay. But there are two, there are two separate stormwater parcels, correct? Okay. Just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vance, anything?
Yes, are we far, far long enough to know if a single will be warranted at the intersection of Jones Sausage Road and 70? Are we that far along? Is it too early yet?
So at this point, it would be too early. You'd have to know the specific uses, and that would be something that would come through the traffic impact analysis and the coordination with DOT to see what kind of, what kind of traffic's going to be generated there and whether that would be warranted or not.
Is it anticipated being a full movement intersection there? We can go straight across the Jones Sausage Road?
Um, yes, because, yeah, that's where the extension is coming through. Yes, that is expected to be eventually a full movement, but some of that depends on when that, that northern piece comes through of the Jones Sausage Road extension.
No further questions?
Mr. Mayor, can I touch on that? That many, many years ago, when we first did the improvements at Jones Sausage and 70, and we met with DOT, and they showed all of this whenever Jones Sausage Extension came through, and it showed when it came through and it was developed, there would be a full-term signal there, yes. And of course, that's down the road, but that's what they showed us several years ago.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Matthews, anything? Mr. Dellinger?
No question.
Yeah, Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Okay. All right, so no questions for this group. Who else from the applicant is here that wants to offer testimony? Yes. Mr. Porter, please come forward and state your name and address, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. It's nice to see everybody in person, so.
Yes.
I appreciate your time tonight and the invitation to be here. I'm Rich Barta, and my address is 831 East Morehead Street in Charlotte, North Carolina. We are the applicant here, and I just wanted to add a little, since I haven't had, been able to talk to anybody in person in a year and a half, I feel like I'm compelled to stand up here. First of all, I'd like to thank council for having us and the great work of the staff, because we started this project before, well before, actually, and it has been a tough year for everyone. So I appreciate all the efforts that everybody made to process this during a difficult time and get it to this point. We're excited about this next step for White Oak. We have great plans for this property and a continuation of what we started on the other side. So all those old buildings that you see along that way that have been kind of not as pleasant to drive by maybe for the past 20 years are going to go away and be replaced with development that is, you know, it's kind of synced up architecturally and otherwise with what we started at White Oak. So thank you for your consideration of this project, and I'll answer any questions anybody might have here tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. Hold on, maybe some questions. Mr. Matthews, anything? Ms. Singleton? Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dellinger? Mr. Vance? You get an easy pass tonight, Mr. Porter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, sir. Anybody else giving testimony for the applicant? None? Okay. You'll identify yourself.
Pam Porter with TMT LA Associates. We did the landscape plan on this, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the landscape plan.
Okay, I'll open it to council in general. If there are questions for Ms. Porter, anybody? Okay.
That was easy. Thank you.
Barely none. Thank you, okay. All right, anybody else speaking in favor of this project? Are there those present who are speaking in opposition to the project? Okay, hearing and seeing none. All right, I believe I'm going to close a public hearing and ask for a motion by council here enclosed. And you see the recommendation of the, of the planning commission, excuse me, of the planning staff.
So, second?
Okay, motion properly made and seconded, Mr. Matthews and Mr. Singleton. Any questions? Hearing none. Hall in favor of the motion before us, please vote aye.
Aye.
And no if there's any opposition, and there is none. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Porter, and those who are with you. Mr. Smith is here. Yeah, I see him there. So we'll be recycling this after the planning commission does their thing with it, okay? Be safe going back to Charlotte. All right, Mr. Vanfor, let's see, you're still up, is that right? Item four, CZ 2010, Ranger Meadows Conditional District rezoning with site plan, and Mr. Vanfor, we'll hear from you as I open this public hearing as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is also a conditional district zoning request. The property is located at the northwest corner of Highway 70 West and Yergin Road. The project site is 22.01 acres. This is a vicinity map of the rezoning site. It's south of Henry Drive, west of Yergin Road, north of US Highway 70 West, and east of Loop Road. This is a Google Street View looking east on Highway 70, and the rezoning and project site is over here on the left side of the road as you travel east on Highway 70 West. This map shows the zoning in this area of Garner. The property is zoned for commercial use. It's zoned community retail. To the north, we have heavy commercial zoning, service business, and the darker red. To the northwest, we have single-family homes on Henry Drive, zoned R20. Also, to the west, we have some office uses, zoned office and institutional. To the south, we have office and institutional zoning and also community retail zoning. At the southeast corner of 70 in Yergin Road and Loop Road, we also have some community retail zoning. This is the new Fidelity Business Park. And across the street to the east, on the east side of Yergin Road, we have also community retail zoning. We have a large, several vacant undeveloped tracks and also a retail use at the corner. This chart or table shows the zoning cases in this area of Garner. The new Fidelity Business Park was rezoned in 2006. We had a zoning case in 2012 for the old movie theater, which was rezoned by Wake County Public Schools. We had a zoning case in 2013 and also a case in 2017 on Loop Road from R20 to service business conditional District 198. The existing zoning is community retail, so all 52 uses in the community retail district would be permissible on the site. This includes office, retail, restaurants, shopping centers, a medical office, and uses like that. Community retail does not allow any outdoor operations or outdoor storage. All uses have to be conducted within an enclosed building. This map shows the two different zoning requests. Again, the entire site is zoned community retail, general use. We have a portion proposed to be rezoned to multifamily two, conditional use District 235, and we also have three sites that would be rezoned from community retail general use to community retail conditional use. The multifamily portion is approximately 18.54 acres, and out of a list of 21 uses allowed in the multifamily two zoning district, the applicant has limited the range down to only three: condominiums, multifamily, and community centers. In addition to the list of permissible uses, the applicant has also proposed the following conditions, and this would apply only to the multifamily zoning site. An amenity shall include a minimum 4,800 square-foot clubhouse with a 2,500 square-foot outdoor swimming pool. Next, building height shall be limited to a maximum of four stories. Number four, no vinyl siding shall be used for any exterior building material. And the last zoning condition, development of this site shall be completed in conformance with the approved subdivision and site plan. We are moving on to the three lots that would be rezoned from community retail general use to community retail conditional use. Out of a list of 52 permissible uses, the applicant has restricted the range down to 39. And the acreage for those three lots that would be commercial is approximately 3.47 acres. Proposed are uses under household living, uses under community service, daycare uses, educational facilities and services, government facilities, uses under healthcare, parks and open space, utilities, entertainment, office, overnight accommodations, commercial parking, uses under retail sales and service, and vehicle service limited, and restaurant uses, indoor seating with a drive-through and walk-up and takeout only. The last condition for the commercial retail portion is development of this site shall be completed in conformance with the approved preliminary subdivision plan. And I'll pause and let Gabby pick up and go over the transportation portion.
So a TIA was required for the multifamily household living uses, as the site plan will accommodate more than 100 dwelling units, and the TIA recommended the following improvements. Along Yergin Road, the applicant will widen Yergin Road to provide a two-way left-turn lane between US 70 and the site driveway. At US 70 and Yergin Road, they will provide 100 feet of dedicated storage for the exclusive southbound left-turn lane on Yergin Road, and modify the existing traffic signal to accommodate that recommended lineage. At Yergin Road and site driveway, they will provide 50 feet of dedicated storage for the exclusive northbound left-turn lane on Yergin Road and construct a site driveway with one ingress lane and one egress lane. At US 70 and the right-in, right-out site driveway, they'll provide an exclusive westbound right-turn lane on US 70, and as a note, this, this turn lane will have to be striped within the thoroughfare widening along the project frontage on US 70 until the time that this lane can be converted to a continuous through lane, so until 70 is widened to six lane for that, that entire span. And they will construct a site driveway with one ingress lane and one egress lane. So NC DOT's response to the findings of the TIA, the recommended improvements to the area directly adjacent to the intersection of US 70 and Yergin Road were determined by DOT to have the potential to drastically interrupt the intersection function because of the short length of road that would be improved or widened. Therefore, a payment of fee and lieu for the installation of the intersection improvements will be accepted at this time. All other improvements have been agreed to and incorporated.
The neighborhood meeting was held remotely on December the 17th, 2020, with approximately eight neighboring property owners in attendance. There were approximately 60 properties identified within the notification radius. There were two owners that did call or email to ask questions prior to the meeting, and this information is detailed in your staff report. Allison Jones will pick up and give the presentation on the site plan.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and town council members and everyone. I will be presenting the subdivision site plan portion, excuse me, not portion, subdivision, this part of the site plan, excuse me. I'm trying to keep it together, not separate, like I'm used to saying it separately, sorry. The total acreage for the site is 22.0 acres, and the number of lots, as David mentioned before, are four lots, and estimated, estimated expected dwelling units for this proposal is 264 units. The site plan for the northern lot to exceed, excuse me, the landscape buffers requirements, the tree cover, site plan for the northern lot to exceed 3.08 acres, the 14% minimum tree coverage of 2.00. the 14% minimum tree coverage of 2.6 acres. The out parcels will be evaluated at the time of individual site plan submittal. The permanent buffers for the northern MF2 site plan of 35 feet and 25 feet are shown based on the uses and vacant zoning surrounding this project area. The primitive buffers for areas under conditional CR zoning will be evaluated with width as well as plantings at the time of site plan submission. The street buffers are 15 feet based on assumption that all uses are retail in the conditional CR and multifamily uses that fall within the Class III buffer designation. Those will be further evaluated at site plan submittal to make sure that they are in conformance. The street trees are being provided every 40 feet as required. Along Yergin Road, they're now required and now being provided. The private interim drives, there are 78 required and 78 being provided. And on US 70, there are three being required and three being proposed. The open space and parks information. This site is not located in parkland acquisition area. And the open space would not be required for the commercial development site because commercial development sites do not require open space. But it is required for the multifamily use. Inspection department took care of the fire department review and approved the plans. Environment footprint, there is a news repair and buffer on the property. Documentation from government authority before encroachment of environmentally sensitive areas is required before any work can be done. Stormwater management. The Raynor Meadows is a commercial and multifamily development site that is located within the watershed protection area. This development site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and TSA removal as well as water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, 25, and 100-year storm events. This development plan proposes two wet retention ponds to treat impervious surface for the multifamily development site as well as future commercial development on the out parcels. This device will satisfy all water quality and quantity requirements for the site for the nitrogen and TSA removal and will attain the 1, 10, 25-year storm events. A nitrogen offset payment will be required as a part of this development. Water and sewer, the parcels will be served by the City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer System. Gabby will talk to you more about the road improvements and sidewalks.
Thank you.
So for the roads and sidewalks, the Raynor Meadows site is located at the northwest corner of 70 and Yergin Road. So along the Yergin Road frontage, the road on the development side will be improved to a Town of Garner major collector section, which is half of a 49 back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb and a 74-foot right-of-way. A dedicated right turn lane into the site drive will be provided on the southbound, on southbound Yergin Road. Curb gutter sidewalk and storm drainage will also be installed. Along the US 70 frontage, the road on the development side will be improved to a six-lane divided section with the addition of a third lane of pavement on westbound US Highway 70. At this time, a portion of the additional lane will function as a dedicated right turn lane into the site driveway. Curb gutter sidewalk and storm drainage will also be installed. Any potential improvements to the area directly adjacent to US 70 and Yergin Road intersection? We're determined by DOT to have the, so we already went through this, so I'm not going to repeat it again, but it's essentially what DOT had determined, that just widening for that narrow strip right by the intersection would have more of a potential to drastically interrupt the function at the intersection. And because of that, they will just be making a payment of fee and lieu until it is able to be, until 70 is able to be widened for that entire stretch. Internal to the site, the development will be served by a new private road, which will connect to both US 70 and Yergin Road and will stub to the parcel to the west. So in terms of frontage improvements, a portion of the additional lane on 70 will be used as a dedicated right for now. And that third lane will be added across the frontage further west on 70. The fee and lieu will be paid for the improvements directly adjacent to the intersection. And as I was explaining, there is one parcel in between that is not a part of the development. And so the improvements can't be carried along the entire stretch on US 70. And Yergin Road will be a major collector. So there will be enough pavement for bike lanes that will not be striped at this time since the widening will only be occurring along the portion that fronts this parcel. So that will be done in the future.
And here is just a copy of the proposed site. Minimum parking for specific use will be reevaluated at time of zoning compliance and special use. The site lighting has been evaluated, and it is under the 4,000 Kelvin that we normally look for. And the street lighting will be evaluated at site plan construction drawing time.
The planning commission will review the plan consistency for this request, looking at the Garner Forward Future Land Use Plan and also the transportation plan as well as the Parks, Recreation, and Greenway Cultural Resources Master Plan. The town council at the decision will need to approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Staff recommends that once the town council holds the public hearing and gets comment from the public, that this case be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency. That concludes the presentation, and we are available to answer questions. And the applicant is also here as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manford and others who participated in this segment. We appreciate that. Council, your opportunity for questions at this point. Mr. Matthews, I'll start with you, sir.
Not this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Dallinger.
Just a few questions. One, with relation to the Swift Creek watershed, how is that evaluated with regards to the site plans developed? And also with the rezoning, are there any implications in that it's in the watershed? It's in an existing non-compliance area. So does that mean that there are carryovers for changing the zoning that we're going to be held to? What is the impact of the watershed on this rezoning?
Yes, sir. Does anybody have an answer to the watershed? I don't have an answer to that question.
So if a portion of the watershed was identified as existing non-compliance, it was understood that there would not be an expectation for it to comply to any of the new watershed rules that were approved back in the day? So anything that was expected to was coded something else. But the non-compliance was recognized as that's going to be urban development that can exist without meeting those standards. So that was given an exemption.
And it wouldn't be subject to the permeability requirements either or density requirements? I don't know why it's in the watershed, if it, just taking out the watershed.
Is this the overlay or the land management plan? That might be talking about two different things. If we're talking Swift Creek land management plan, what I just said is what?
It does have to comply with anything related to the Swift Creek management plan, okay. Another question is, looking at the future land use map that was approved in our comprehensive plan, this isn't consistent with that. Is that correct?
That is correct. So a plan, a feature of map amendment would be required as part of this request.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, curious question. So we talked about the improvements on 70 to six-lane divided section, in addition to a third lane, et cetera. Curb gutter sidewalk and storm drainage will also be installed. Now, the previous public hearing that we had, which is along Highway 70, said, talked about the improvements to the site. An asphalt multi-use path will be constructed in lieu of sidewalk along US Highway 70 frontage. So I'm just curious why we're doing a sidewalk on one and a multi-use path on another?
So, sorry, I didn't hear a part of that question. So you're asking why we're providing sidewalk on one side of 70 and?
On this project, it's going to be a sidewalk. But on the previous project, White Duck Ridge, it's not a sidewalk. It's an asphalt multi-use, an asphalt multi-use path will be constructed in lieu of sidewalk along the US Highway 70 frontage. So this is US Highway 70 frontage, but it's going to be a sidewalk. I'm just trying to figure out why one's a sidewalk and one's a multi-use path.
Right, so there is a recommendation for, in the transportation plan, for a multi-use trail along 70. But it doesn't necessarily need to be on both sides of 70. And I believe it was on the south side of 70 that we were requiring it. So for developments that are coming in along the south side of 70, we're requiring that. And on the north side, it's just regular sidewalk, if that makes sense.
Okay, just curious, especially since this has residential with multifamily as a proposal. Okay, you answered my question, thank you. The other one's going to the commercial park, and this is going to residential. So you think the residential would have the multi-use path, but I'll be quiet.
Mr. Vance, anything? Mr. Brown?
I do have one question. I don't remember which one of the presenters mentioned it, but about there would not be a third lane on 70 or improvements on a small stretch of 70 west of Yergin Road until 70 is widened. Are there plans to widen Highway 70, and when would that be?
A long ways away because they got to do the Highway 50 bridge first, and they got to do the indoor springs road bridge, so.
So it's years away?
I think I might be able to help with that one. Basically, the reason is that they don't want to have such a small section through here to be widened. So we're going to be building the right turn lane into the development, but they're worried if you put a long section right here that it'll get people thinking that there's an extra through lane on 70, and you'll start having weaving issues going back and forth. And that could cause issues at this intersection. So right now, there is plans, I think, to have 70 widened, but it's many years out. I know the one at Timber Drive was recently deferred back because of funding. I think it's currently in fiscal year '29. But yes, eventually it will become a six-lane facility.
I understand not wanting to put an improvement in there that's going to confuse people. I just was wondering when Highway 70, we're planning to widen that.
I don't have a timetable at this time.
Thank you.
Who did I miss on council? Phil, did I get you? Mr. Vance?
Just another question on the zoning change. I mean, have we done an analysis of our available commercial zoning in the town? Have we looked at kind of the opportunity cost of swapping out viable commercial property for multifamily?
We have not.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just remember that in Wake County, per, Wake County Tax Revenue Department, per square foot, the highest paid property in Wake County is multifamily. Just remember that.
If you go vertical, if you go vertical, I'd challenge that.
Well, when he was here and we asked that question last year, he repeated again that that was correct.
Okay, I believe, well, go ahead, Mr. Kresenberg.
I just wanted, Mr. Singleton, we will just double-check that. We've been trying to make a call administratively. I'm sorry, which side the multipath use goes for these corridors. So we will double-check that before that comes back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have some other persons to give testimony. The gentleman in the back, were you planning to testify, sir? Yes.
No, I was just going to, my name is, I was up here. My name is Bart McLean. I'm a civil engineer for the project with W M G Daniel Associates. And I was just going to, if anybody had any questions that needed answering, I'd be glad to try to do it, that's it.
Fine. Wilson, trying to call you out. I just noticed you were going to answer another question, I think that came up. Any question for this gentleman?
Just one quick question since the engineering is here. I do have one question on how, it's not clear to me how the riparian buffer issues are addressed. Are those fixed? Like, are they, they're not?
We have submitted to the state for impact permits, but we had to wait till, what was it, mid-March? For the new permitting process to take over for the state. So they are in and being reviewed.
How long does that process take?
We're hoping to know something here in about a month. But everything is in, everything has been looked at.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir, thank you. Okay, anybody else for the applicant? Yeah, are there persons, go ahead, I'm sorry? Please, yeah.
So I do have, so first of all, thanks for giving me the opportunity to come up here. It's good to see everybody. So I do have some questions.
Steve, just state your name and address.
Yes, sir. I'm Steve Ward. I own the property right on 70, right in front of the development. And good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, Councilman. I do have some questions. First of all, let me say that I'm not opposed to the, to the project. But I'm just concerned about how it's going to impact my business. And I did have a question about the retention ponds, the location of them. And I noticed from the last subdivision site plan that you had that the retention ponds were further away from 70, and these are closer to 70. I just, I guess I'd like to know why that is. And then also, I have a driveway and outlet that seems to be impacted as well. And I wanted to see if there's, how much of that is going to be taken away by the right-of-way and how I'm going to be affected there, and that's my concerns. One other question I'm concerned about is, are these going to be rental units or are these going to be sale units, for sale?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ward.
If I can address that last question, it's not permissible under North Carolina state law to make a decision based on the ownership or proposed ownership of property. So there's, really cannot consider whether it would be apartment versus condominium. It's the density of the use and the It's the density of the use and the type of the use that the council can consider, but not the ownership structure.
Okay.
May I have, I have one question to that point. Are these, have these been listed as, are sale units? I noticed that some of these other sites and subdivisions, they list a minimum sale amount. Have any of these been listed as a minimum price?
Is that a question that can be answered, or that applies to your earlier statement, Ms. Jones?
I don't have any information.
Technically, again, price points of residential housing, whatever type it is, is not generally a permissible consideration for the council to consider.
I just got my answer from the gentleman in the back here, and he said they are indeed rentals.
Okay, let's see, Steve, is there any other question that can be answered? I think you have basically what you were inquiring about, is that right? Or, you said something about the impact on your property, but?
Yes, sir. That's one of my concerns. With rentals, I just assumed that they were gonna be sales units or townhomes, but I did not know indeed that they were gonna be rentals. You know, I'm not in a position to make a determination based on this, but that's what you folks are here for. So I would just say that I do have some concern with that. Other than that, thank you.
I have one question for, has anyone reached out to you prior to tonight related to this property?
We had a Zoom meeting, as described, I believe it was December 17th. Is that correct? So yes, I was advised. Was I given any details of this nature? No, sir. I had no details on what the plan entailed as far as, you know, the, I did know the quantity. It was actually 282 at that time, 282 units, but I see it's been revised to, what was that, 263? It's a lot of housing, a lot of rental units. I don't know how many there is in that area, or what, if there's any guidelines for that kind of thing, but thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Ward. Anybody else? This gentleman back here, I recognize you, sir. Come forward and state your name and address, please.
My name is Art Alexander. My family and I are property owners across Yergin Road, the large undeveloped tract of about 10 acres. And I have, I guess have some comments and questions about the riparian buffer, because I don't know if the town's aware of this, you may not be, in fact, you probably aren't. But from 2008 through 2012, I spent $55,000 in litigation with the state over that waterway that runs from there and then across our property, Highway 70. And the bottom line on that legal, I don't know what to call it, but I was forced into arbitration, basically, by the state. And that, our portion of that waterway, which is downstream, if you wanna call it that, was ruled as not being subject to the riparian buffer. Now, they've turned around now and are saying that this upstream portion from me is subject to the riparian buffer, which gives me a great deal of consternation over what's gonna happen when we develop what, you know, is now downstream, and which I've already had settled on. I talked to the gentleman about this during the Zoom call, and suggested to them that I thought they ought to fight this, but I understand, I know they wanna get it developed. But I just want the town to be aware, because town and state don't always work together on these things. And bottom line, I'll be happy to give the town a report of what we went through if anybody's interested in it. But the state did not do due diligence before they went out and declared that this section of that was subject to the riparian buffer. There were maps at that time that showed that it was not on their radar, and there are a lot of wranglings that have gone on since then that have basically allowed them to do things that they probably shouldn't have done, but, you know, they're the 800-pound gorilla, they have the power, and nobody ever fights them on these things. So I just want the town to be aware of, you know, what we went through, and I can promise you that when we get ready to develop it, we will go through it again if we have to. We will not sit back and let them take that property and turn it into, you know, something that is covered by the riparian buffer when it should not be. So, you know, if anybody wants to talk to me about, if anybody wants to see any of the legal stuff that we did, I'll be happy to furnish it to you. So, just for future reference, when we, and we have, you know, we're working on the development of that right now, it just hasn't gotten to the stage to present it to the town. So, there're gonna be fireworks over that, at that point, if this goes through, and they're allowed to put that riparian buffer on there. I think the town should fight that personally. And, you know, if you wanna have a longer meeting with hearings about why I believe this, you know, I could substantiate this with engineering reports and all kinds of things. Not just a guy standing up here upset because of the property. I got plenty to back it up, so, okay?
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody care to respond to that, not at this time? Okay, I think we're getting to the conclusion of this hearing. Was there anybody else who wished to speak on this matter? Okay, I appreciate those of you who have appeared here this evening. Obviously, the recommendation to council is, as the others, that this matter be referred to the Planning Commission for their consideration of consistency review and recommendations. So.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, can I ask staff one more question?
Yeah.
Mr. Ward brought up the point about the stormwater retention being moved closer to 70, and the site plan here on the screen is blurry. I'm making the assumption that the storm, but there are two stormwater retention ponds on this project? One is, basically, they're both bordering Mr. Ward's property, if I'm not mistaken. Off this picture, is that correct, Jeff? Is there, are there two or just one? It's blurry, it's hard to read.
Yeah, one here.
One here and one there.
And one there.
So that's both of them. And that does border your property, correct? Just wanna make sure. All right, thank you.
Here it is, yeah. Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, council, you ready? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing and call for a motion on the recommendation.
Move and recommend to Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Hearing no further questions from council, I'll ask you to vote. If you favor the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there is opposition, vote no. And the ayes carry the motion, and the matter will be referred as requested to the Planning Commission, and will make its way back here.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, probably 160D question again, since the order of things has changed again. Is the Planning Commission gonna be provided a summary of the proceedings here, so they'll get a summary of all the comments from council and the public to consider?
That is correct. That'll be in our staff report to Planning Commission.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Recession, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry?
Recession.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna do that as soon as I finish this here, and we're almost finished. So, okay, well, I wanna thank those of you who participated in this particular hearing, and the information shared, particularly staff and others. So, at this point in time, we are at the point in the agenda where we need to take a brief recess, so we will get to the final items on our agenda when we return. I'm gonna declare a recess of 10 minutes. Meeting is recessed, and we will. Okay, thank you all for being back timely, maybe even more so than the mayor, I guess. So, we are hopefully getting close to finishing up our meeting this evening. Thank you all for your patience. We have one more public hearing, and I'm gonna recognize Mr. Banford for CZ's SP 2013, Evolve NC 50 Restaurant, and this is another conditional district rezoning with site plan. Mr. Banford?
Yes, sir. This is case number CZ 20-13, Evolve NC 50 Restaurant. The property is located at the corner of NC 50 and Evolve Drive. The rezoning area is approximately 2.18 acres. This is a vicinity map of the rezoning site outlined in orange. Benson Road, NC 50 runs north to south along the western boundary of the property. To the north, we have some single-family use. Directly to the east, we have Evolve Timber Creek Apartments that is currently developed. To the south, we have single-family use. And across the street to the west, we have Van Story Hills, a single-family subdivision. This is a Google Street View, looking, I guess, southeast. Evolve Drive is located here off of Benson Road, and this goes back to the Evolve Timber Creek Apartment Development. And this is looking south with Van Story Hills subdivision to the right. This map shows the zoning pattern in this area. The property is zoned community retail conditional use. Evolve Timber Creek Apartments is zoned MF2 conditional use. To the south, we have some community retail and O N I zoning conditional use. Across the street to the west, Van Story Hills subdivision is zoned R12. To the northwest, we have Timber Crossing Shopping Center Zone Service Business conditional use. So the predominant zoning in this area is commercial, multifamily, and single-family. This table shows the zoning history for this area of Garner. The oldest case we could find was from 1978. The most recent case was the Evolve Timber Creek Apartments, which was rezoned in 2016. And this site was rezoned in 2008, from neighborhood commercial, community retail, and R20, to both community retail and office institutional conditional use District 152. The existing zoning is community retail conditional use. It was rezoned in 2008. And the permissible uses on the site currently are 32 uses out of a total list of 52, and this includes retail, office, and restaurants. Indoor seating restaurants are a permissible use under the current zoning, however, restaurants with drive-through service is not a permissible use. This is a permissible use in the community retail general use district, but it was restricted out when it was rezoned in 2008. The applicant has proposed the following use conditions. The range of uses have been limited from the list of 52 down to 32 permissible uses. Uses under household living, community service, daycares, educational facilities, government facilities, healthcare, religious institutions, utilities, entertainment, office, retail sales and service, and restaurants, to also include restaurants with a drive-through service. And lastly, vehicle sales and service, which would be vehicle service limited only. In addition to the proposed list of uses, this is also a condition of the zoning. Development of this site shall be completed in conformance with the approved preliminary site plan. So the site plan is a condition with the rezoning. I'll let Gabby discuss the traffic.
So because the most likely and intense use of a 4,000-square-foot restaurant retail building didn't trigger the threshold that would require the completion of a traffic impact analysis, that was not completed for this site. But driveway and access permits are required along NC 50 from NC DOT, so the applicant was required to coordinate with NC DOT for that. And Evolve Drive has full access to and from NC 50, which is 1,400 feet south of the intersection of 50 at Timber Drive. I'll hand it back to David.
The neighborhood meeting was held on April 5, 2021, with one property owner in attendance, and staff identified 45 properties within the notification buffer. And more information is provided in your staff report. And I will pause and let Stacy go over the site plan proposal.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Again, this is a conditional district with accompanying commercial site plan of about 2.18 acres. The minimum lot size in this case would be 6,000 square feet. There's 10% tree coverage required with 11.4% of existing and replacement plantings provided. The perimeter buffers were based on the likely use, which would be a 25-foot perimeter buffer along the property line with the apartments, a 7.5-foot buffer adjacent to the Lot 1 that'll be created through the recombination, and we will evaluate those for compliance at the time of zoning compliance permit for occupancy of the building. The street buffers are presumed to be 20 feet along Benson Road and 15 feet along Evolve Drive based on a likely restaurant use. And street trees are provided approximately every 40 feet as required. You see the numbers there along Benson, six required and six provided, and then along Evolve, eight required and 10 provided. This is not located in a property acquisition area for parks, and there's no open space required as this is a commercial development. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and approved this preliminarily. The site does not contain FEMA-designated floodplain, as you can see there. For stormwater, the site is subject to quality requirements for nitrogen, as well as quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. A sand filter with vegetated filter strip, as well as a wet retention pond to treat impervious surface, are proposed. These devices will satisfy all water quality and quantity requirements for nitrogen and detention, and a nitrogen offset payment will also be required. The site will be served by City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer. The site will be served by City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer.
So two driveways will be installed into the site off of Evolve Drive. One full movement at the east end and one ride-out only closer to Benson Road. The eastern driveway will enter an access driveway with a cross-access agreement that will stub to the north for future access to adjacent parcels. And there will be one right-in, right-out driveway with a dedicated right-turn lane provided along Benson Road. Terms of frontage improvements, along the Benson Road frontage, the road will be improved to the Town of Garner thoroughfare street section, which is half of a 72-foot back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb in a 100-foot right-of-way. Curb, gutter, sidewalk, and storm drainage will be installed, and no improvements are required to Evolve Drive.
You have before you the site plan with some points pointed out for exit-only's onto Evolve as well as future connectivity in the back there to Timber Drive East and the stormwater pond behind that. Then you see the right-in, right-out access from northbound Benson Road as well as the cross-access with the adjacent Lot 1 that I spoke about earlier that will be created as part of this recombination. And the full-access intersection, which is at Evolve. The minimum parking for the specific use will be reevaluated at time of zoning compliance permit. And the site currently meets minimums for parking for the most likely intense use of the property. The proposed lighting meets the requirements of the lighting ordinance as well as the staff recommendations for LED fixtures. And David will take you through the next steps.
The Planning Commission will review plan consistency with the Garner Forward Future Landings Plan and also Transportation Plan as well as the Parks, Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. This comes back to council for a decision. The council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Staff recommends that once the council holds the public hearing and gets public comments, that this case be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency. That concludes our presentation, and we are available for questions. And the applicant is here as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banford. Counsel, I'll give you a chance, if you have questions at this point before we hear from the applicant. I'll start with Ms. Perringer.
I have no questions.
Go this way to Mr. Dillinger.
Yes, could you elaborate on this east Timber Drive connection?
So in the long run, we wanted to be sure that this area has an alternative to getting to Timber Drive East in the future. So this was something that we had kind of built into future plans for this when Evolve Apartments was approved, that that way traffic does not all have to come out onto 50 if they're going northbound, if they want to go east on Timber Drive East. So we are working with the adjacent parcels that we'll be developing to make sure that there's some kind of internal connection to provide folks an opportunity to head east on Timber Drive East without having to get onto Benson Road and go through that intersection.
Is that drafted planned road in connection already? Is there a map of that somewhere? And is DOT aware of it and all that stuff, too?
So there's access points identified on Timber Drive East. So we'll just be working internally as part of the logical extension of the local street system to make sure that those connections are made.
So could you, could we get a copy of that so we know what that kind of looks like? That connection to Timber Drive East? And then my other question, is that something that DOT has already approved? Is it a DOT road?
So the property that is at the corner will need to, will have access until we see a site plan for that. We won't know exactly where it's at, but that site is much further. But we can give you a zoom out to kind of show theoretically how that would work. So we're just at this point, we're requiring the cross-connectivity so that each site will connect to the others. And then it'll just be a logical extension as we go through each development of each parcel.
But a subsequent development wouldn't be required to use that?
We would, with it being stubbed, we would require connection, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Ban, anything? Okay, here, Ms. Singleton.
Well, Mr. Dull, your question, same one I had. I know that, well, I know that something's hopping on that corner. We all know that because it's got a soul sign on it. Anyway, that's been talked about for some time, that to get access to that property, you couldn't, at the corner, it was too close to the intersection. You had to go down and have a driveway to access whatever will be on those properties. They're only going to get so many driveways onto Timber Drive, and this will be a connector to that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews. Okay, did I miss you, Ms. Perringer, or anybody here? Okay, all right. Anything else from staff? Is that it? Applicant to hear wish to give testimony? Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is David Blevins. I'm a civil engineer with Bass, Nixon, Kennedy. I'm joined...
Pull your mask down, Mr. Blevins, if you don't mind. Pull your mask down.
Oh, okay, yeah. Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned it. I'm joined tonight by Mr. Williams, property owner, and his representative, Brenda Compton. And also with me is Claude Clark, who is with Bojangles', and he's familiar with the operations of the restaurant and the facility. So between the three of us, or the four of us, if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. I don't have anything. I think staff went through everything very thoroughly. It was, from the very beginning, important. They made it very important for us to understand the interconnectivity to remove the traffic off of Highway 50. So that's been a part of the site plan from the very beginning. So if there are any questions, we'll be happy to help you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Don't go far. Anybody have questions for Mr. Blevins? I'll just ask that. Okay, none at this time. The, Mr. Williams or Ms. Compton care to?
Thank you. We've planned for this for a long time.
Yes, yes, I know. Things have been in the works a long time out there. Mr. Fowler, Mr. Williams, and others, yeah, okay. So, okay, no other questions here? Anybody here came to speak in regards to the matter or opposed to the matter? Seeing and hearing none? All right, I believe, David, do you have anything else? No?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Okay. All right, council, you ready to vote? I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a vote on this matter. Again, that this matter be referred to the Planning Commission for review and reasonableness. It will come back to us.
Motion seconded.
Okay, motion made, properly seconded. Any other question, hearing none? I will call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And it is so ordered. Thank you all. Thank you for your patience. You got the last hearing of the night, so somebody has to get that, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you for your patience. We appreciate it. Okay, counsel, we'll move right along. I'm not aware of any new or old business. Mr. Manager or Assistant Manager, anybody know of anything?
Nothing to add.
All right. Counsel, any committee reports from anybody? None? Okay, let's see, is your HR committee, was it going to get together at some point?
Oh, yes, we are. That's in the works, and we will report on that a little later.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you. Okay, I'm at manager reports. There are some things we need to hear from our manager on.
Mr. Mayor, town council, you have the Garner info. Then there's also the quarterly financial report. And the finance director, David Beck, is here. If you have any questions, I know one of the things he wanted to note is that the sales tax numbers continue to surprise us and stay fairly consistent and higher than what we anticipated. So if there's any questions about that.
Okay.
And then also wanted to just remind you and the community that the Garner community cleanup continues. It goes on through the 24th. And if anyone wants to sign up to clean up a stretch of roadway in Garner, they can go to whitedeerpark.com. And we've had great success so far in seeing a lot of groups and families and kids come out and keep Garner cleaner. And then I would just also mention, at the work session next week, I want to share some information with you about how we plan to ramp up some of our parks and rec programming again. So we'll talk to you about that at the work session.
Remind me, or maybe you said it, this little cleanup officially, it goes, is it the 24th of April?
The 24th of April, yes.
Okay, so, and as far, there may or may not be organized activity on given days or through, or possibly on this Saturday, do you know?
There's a sign-up, and we can get in contact with the staff member and see who's got anything assigned for Saturday if you want to try to join one of those groups.
Okay, yeah, I've been out of town for most of it, so I would like to participate. And I encourage counsel to at least be aware of it, sure enough. And Mr. Dixon, just for the public's knowledge, you and I talked about this today, but the town's picking up of unprepared trash, is that the right term?
Yeah, just unprepared pickup.
That date has ended, I believe now, is that right?
Correct, that is ended, yes.
Okay, I know I've had a couple of people ask me, and I couldn't remember what the ending date was, but it's officially over with, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, any questions about the, either the manager's reports or the, for Mr. Beck, who has been patiently sitting here regarding that financial report? It is good news to hear that the tax revenues are better than we had anticipated. Okay, anything you care to add, Mr. Beck, or you're just here to answer questions? Okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you, sir. And also Mr. Johnson, who's been here the entire time. All right, Mr. Attorney, do you have any report of it you'd like to share?
I'd just like to let counsel know that I'll be out of the office this Thursday to attend the government and public sector section of the North Carolina Bar Association. This year, I was a planner for our annual continuing legal education course, so I'll be in Cary helping out with the logistics of a virtual meeting from the other side.
Okay, you'll be busy, I'm sure, so thank you for that information. Okay, and thank you, by the way, for information you've been sharing with counsel, potentially as it relates to your memorandum on the conditional zoning legislative hearings and those kinds of things. Those are all very helpful, sure enough. Okay, I'm going to ask counsel for reports that they might have, and I will start tonight with Mr. Singleton to my left.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just, I have a request. I know we have some new zoning signs, has the big Z on them, they look good, but I would like us to have more than one on the site. I'll take this property, the Reiner property as an example. It's got, it's on two different roads. There's one at the corner, and that's it, the big piece up there. We need to have multiple signs. When we did the property on Jones Sausage Road, the two warehouses across from Amazon, just south of Hunter's Mark, there's one big old property out there and they have one sign. Let's get at least two signs on properties. I mean, let's face it, the people that have new mattresses still in the plastic get four or five signs out at the intersection. So, I mean, really. And campaign signs, you just don't see one stuck somewhere, you know? There's must have been four or five up. So I would just like us to have multiple signs because people go by them, and, you know, unless you've got binoculars and you stop, you can't read it. And that's all, most all signs. I'm just talking about ours. But if you have multiple ones on there, I think it's just helpful to have multiple. Unless you do what the City of Wilson does, which is has a barricade with a huge reflective sign on both sides, and they prop that bed on the property, you can see that one. But that requires two people to put a sign up. But anyway, I would just, multiple signs, I think, would be better for projects. I just, that way people say, well, I didn't ever see anything, or I didn't get anything in the mail. That's all, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Perringer.
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. We've all gotten from time to time the updates from Andy Curtis, that public relations representative from Wake Med letting us know what's going on.
Yeah.
And I would just like to give a shout-out to the Wake Med in Garner on Highway 70. My grandson fell off a swing and broke his arm last night, and we took him over this morning, and he was treated very quickly, taken care of, sent home, and has not complained at all since then and not in pain. So they did an excellent job. So I'm real pleased with that. I think it's good to talk about that from time to time.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir. I made copies of this, and I think everybody's got them, and I appreciate it, John and you guys, both sides. We've talked about this issue before, and I received a phone call, and I received this in the mail. We still got folks really concerned over there on the north side of Garner. A lot of seniors live over there, and the City of Raleigh is trying to come in now and put apartments, and then trying to have access through that street over there. For what purpose, I have no clue. So I know it's been an ongoing battle, but maybe I'm failing to understand, you know, City of Raleigh is on one side of that berm, Garner's on the other side, and how does City of Raleigh, in their infinite wisdom, think they can just take access into that subdivision when it's not in their ETJ or in their city limits? And I know the staff has had battles with this thing with City of Raleigh, and, but the neighborhood's really concerned as to what's going to happen. And so, and as I told Mr. Hodges, now, I know you guys have been working on it, but we need to keep it active, keep it alive, and there's got to be something we can do in support of the citizens of Garner against what Raleigh is wanting to do here. Unless I'm thoroughly misunderstanding, I don't, so I just want, anybody want to share something with that?
We relayed our concerns that we were not in favor of the connectivity to a town street. That we can do. Now, as far as the rezoning and, you know, the development, you know, we won't have as much say on that because that's Raleigh's jurisdiction.
Well, I understand that.
But the connectivity to the town streets, we can't, that has to be approved by the town council, so, you know, that, we have some say over. As far as the vehicle access.
If I could add, and the council's position has been noted in the staff notes about this case. So I think that planning staff had sent out some links to the case so that you could follow it on City of Raleigh's website. It's been some weeks ago, and we can try to send that out to you again. But if you do follow those links, I think you will see that in the staff report, it is Garner's concerns about the connectivity and lack of willingness to approve that has been noted in the staff report.
So, so where are we at with this, I guess is the question?
The City of Raleigh has reported this under the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has until June 7 to take action and then make a referral back to the City Council. So it's going through their process, much like any of the things you heard tonight. So if City of Raleigh had an issue with one of the cases you heard tonight, council would take their comments under advisement, just like they would anyone else's. Those have been noted in the staff report.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I think if anyone, if anyone listening has any questions at all, they can contact our planning department. And I know that we've got the links that we can send out to the City of Raleigh cases. We don't have any control over the content there, but we have been providing the links out to any residents who have called to ask questions about it.
As long as we're doing our due diligence, that was my concern. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I would just note a few, of course, this goes back a little ways, but I know the manager and I had some discussions about this earlier on, and we have talked with a resident or two out there. That's back before things had developed as far as they have now, but we've tried to reassure them that the town is sensitive to their concerns. We can't ultimately dictate the final action that is taken. We can't ultimately dictate the final action that is taken by Raleigh on their side, but we let them know our concerns. Was anything else you had, Phil?
That was it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
On the same topic, I've had some conversations with residents over there and sort of followed the path of the zoning, and it keeps getting kicked down, keep kicking that can down the road, but one of the issues, I believe, is that they want to put, it's zoned right now, low density, and so, and it's also zoned to not have apartments, which obviously are no density, but there's a funny thing they're trying to do with the number of dwelling units as apart, entire apartment buildings, as individual dwelling units, and so what they're trying to do is get rid of the no-repartment part of it, and so that's what they're sort of still concerned with over in Cloverdale. Again, the zoning is very clear that it's low density, but they're trying to wordsmith what they're doing over there, so that's my understanding.
Okay, and, yeah, you're up for, yeah, anything else?
Just to echo concerns, and the residents over there, stay on top of that, on Mr. Singleton's point about the zoning signs, I think, I've seen them around, too, they're nice and big, but they don't have dates on them, and that's kind of troublesome, too, when people are driving by, you kind of want to see what the date and the time of the hearing is versus, I'm driving by this, there's a zoning change, I've got to try to find the phone number on there as I'm driving by. So, I know the old ones did, or they'd have a date and time, and so I think that may be a change we need to put in there, too, is to have some, the date and the time of the hearing, so that's very obvious, too. That's my only comment.
If other signs had it, they would put tape on there and write it. They had a white tape that they put on there.
And I apologize for not remembering the details, there's a reason that Mr. Trezenberg has recently made a change to what they're including on the signs, so we'll get that information and follow up with you and still pass that on, but there was a very specific reason that they had made a switch in the way that they were noticing those, but we'll follow up with you on that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance?
I have one thing, just want to mention that I think we all know Mr. Joey Hopkins, who was Division 5 engineer. He has recently been promoted, and he's now downtown in the main office, Chief Deputy for Planning. So, his replacement is Mr. Brandon Jones. Mr. Jones has lived in Garner, he lives not far from Garner, and he will be the, he is currently the new Division 5 engineer, and we know that Mr. Hopkins was a great service to us, come in and brief us quite frequently on what we needed to know relative to the construction projects in Garner and around, surrounding the area.
If I may, if I may add to Mr. Vance's comments, Mr. Hopkins is the individual who finally got the Jones Sausage Road railroad crossing repaired. It took a while, but he kept, I kept calling him, and he kept looking into it, and so it is now repaired, and we are not losing our teeth going across that crossing anymore.
And I remember him for many things, but my attendance at Campo meetings sort of reintroduced me to him, and, you know, at the end of the meeting, he gave opportunity for different district engineers to make a report, and Mr. Hopkins was always one who had some report to offer usually, and sometimes humorous, but I've got a great respect for Mr. Hopkins, and I'm pleased to hear of his promotion. That's a good thing for him, and I'm sure his replacement will serve us well.
Yes.
He's wearing a ribbon on his pants across the street from me.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Manager, I would just mention that, and you can correct me, it's my understanding now, and for all of our Garner citizens, I hope they know this, that, you know, the stage process of offering vaccinations to people by age and other criteria basically has now been placed in a circumstance where I think any person, adult person, is eligible for vaccination. Am I right on that?
That's correct, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Well, I don't know about all the counties, but I know Wake County and several other surrounding ones offer them to anyone.
Okay.
Some say over 16. I have seen some ads that say certain vaccines is 18 and older, so you may want to check, depending on which vaccine it is.
Okay, thank you. And again, I would just say to the public, I encourage all of our citizens to seek out vaccinations as soon as they can. I think it's the right thing to do, and hopefully it will help our area and our state, and eventually our nation get a better handle on this pandemic, so I feel blessed to have already received both vaccinations, and I'm thankful for that.
The shots that were given at Garner Methodist a couple of weeks ago, the second shots will be delivered, or given, excuse, not delivered, they will be given this Friday and Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
So, everyone who got the first one can get the second one.
Great.
I'll keep the schedule.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Singleton. Okay, thank you, council, for reports. We have a closed-session item that we need to consider, and so I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to the general statutes listed here, or I can read it for you if you want me to.
I'll make the motion and read them.
Okay.
Maybe we go into closed session pursuant to Section 14331811A3 to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation, and statutes, you, Section 14331811 subset A subset 5 to discuss possible real estate acquisition and the town's negotiating position regarding such real estate.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded. If you favor this motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
There's opposition, no, and there is none, and so I will declare that we will now adjourn our regular meeting and go into closed session. The council went into closed session to receive a reporting information from the town managers relates to our recreation center, and we believe we will have some very positive information to share in the very near future. He updated us on a few things, but just a few matters that need yet to have some attention. And secondly, the council also considered a reporting information regarding a possible purchase of property, and at this point, the council has conferred with staff and indicated that we would not move forward on that at this time. With that said and done, I believe we've covered everything on our regular agenda, council, so I will entertain a motion at this time that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, declare this meeting adjourned, and again, thank you all for your time and your delegates. We've covered a lot of territory tonight, I believe, and captured all of our agenda, so thank you all.